The April 12th, 2022, meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first. We will leave a legacy of success. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience to please remove their hats and turn off their electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located in the lobby. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board clerk no later than 5:40 p.m. Procedure applicable for each on a separate sheet. Board clerk, please call the row.
Mrs. Allison Campbell, District 1.
Here.
Mr. Don Browning, District 2.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Thrower, District 4.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Donna Kidwell, Director of Sectional Students Education, please come forward and introduce the individuals who will be providing the inspiration.
Good evening, Board Chair Cummings, Vice Chair Campbell, School Board members, Attorney Powers, Superintendent Gullett, and Mrs. Martinez Lopez. The month of April is Autism Awareness Month. Autism Spectrum Disorder is a neurological difference that can affect anyone regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, or socioeconomic background. It affects one in forty-four children in the United States and approximately eight hundred students in Marion County schools. Autism Spectrum Disorder is estimated to be the fastest-growing developmental disability in the United States by the Centers for Disease Control. Individuals with autism are individuals first and foremost with unique strengths and abilities. I'd now like to introduce Ms. Tammy Perry. Ms. Perry is a program specialist in the ESE Department. She is a former ESE teacher who happens to have taught our student guest, and so she will have the honor of introducing him. Thank you.
Hello. I'm proud to introduce you, Roderick Leek. He's an eleventh grader at Vanguard High School. Rory was diagnosed with autism at the age of two by his pediatrician, and he didn't speak his first words until he was four years old.
I'm having trouble.
In 2008, Rory was assessed by Marion County Public Schools. He went to pre-K for two years in self-contained classrooms, and Rory spent all of his elementary years in the self-contained classrooms. His parents were told that his job opportunities would likely be limited. His parents worked with him every day on reading, writing, and math. Rory always gives one-hundred percent effort. His parents asked that he be given a chance in a regular education class, and they were told that he wasn't ready or his ability wasn't there yet. When he was in the sixth grade, his parents asked about the opportunity to go to regular ed classes. The IAB team agreed. Someone finally saw in him what his parents had seen all along. He started his first mainstream class in the second semester of sixth grade and quickly became completely mainstreamed. In high school, he has been in all regular and honors classes and has done an amazing job. He just passed the pert and will be taking college classes next year for his eleventh grade year. I'd like to present Roderick.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. Symptoms and characteristics of Autism Spectrum Disorder present themselves in a variety of combinations and can result in a lifelong impact on the individual's ability to learn, develop relationships, and understand verbal and nonverbal communication. Early diagnosis and intervention, as well as ongoing support from family, doctors, therapists, and educators can positively impact people with Autism Spectrum Disorder to achieve better outcomes and a higher quality of life. Fully included within their communities, I am a testimony to the limitless potential that lies within students who are on the spectrum, and I urge you to give students with special needs every opportunity possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Rory. We appreciate that. Mr. Aaron Martin, Program Specialist, Library Media Services, please come forward and introduce the individuals who will be providing the pledge and introduce the Library Media Specialist in attendance this evening.
Good evening, everyone. Chair Cummings, Vice Chair Campbell, Board Members King, Thrower, and Browning, Superintendent Dr. Gullett, Mr. Powers, and Ms. Elena Martinez Lopez. I'm excited to come before you tonight for this special recognition. First observed in 1985, School Library Month is celebrated every April as an opportunity to highlight school library contributions to Florida public education. Quality school library programs prepare students for lifelong learning, make a measurable difference in student academic achievement, and enhance reading enjoyment. Our Library Media Specialists strive to maintain a balanced library collection through precision procedures and analyses of the current collection to make informed, database decisions. They also build our students' foundational literacy skills and promote a lifelong love of reading through various lessons, activities, and book recommendations to foster literary and academic progress. Library Media Specialists teach our students invaluable research skills and support English Language Arts standards through collaboration with other teachers and by providing interventions through MTSS supports. Tonight, I am joined by two of our amazing Marion County Library Media Specialists, Ms. Terri Adams from Liberty Middle School and Ms. Terri Robinson from Madison Street Academy. They, along with our other forty-eight wonderful media specialists, were recently asked to conduct an informal survey of their students to ask, "Why is the school library important to you?" Tonight, we are also joined by a few of our students from Madison Street Academy who would like to share one of their responses, which is a reflection of others received from throughout the district.
Our school library has been a sanctuary to me. It is a place of wonder.
Mic down.
Thank you. A place of wonder, and it helps me just take a deep breath and relax. It is very important to have because that is where a lot of knowledge comes from. I can recall many times in the past years that my teachers have borrowed a book from the library to help us teach. Some kids do not have a library close to their home to go to, but we have our library at school that gives us access to extra knowledge, greater ventures through books, and stronger reading skills necessary for a future and a good education. Last but not least, my librarian has made a huge impact on my education. She has had lots of book suggestions for me, most of which I have enjoyed. I have had two librarians in my elementary schooling, and both have been best friends to me. I will never forget any of them.
And thank you again for your recognition and continued support of our school libraries. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Joanne Crowder, Fine Arts Program Specialist.
Is there somebody doing the pledge?
We are.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Joanne Crowder, Fine Arts Program Specialist, please come forward to recognize the individuals that participate in the All-State Program.
Good evening, Board, and Dr. Gullett, Mr. Powers, Ms. Martinez Lopez. I have a lot of exciting events to share with you. March was Arts in Our Schools Month, and we had a lot going on. This past Friday night, we had Secondary Honor Band at Forest High School. The Saturday before, we had Secondary Honor Choir at First Baptist. Most of our middle and high schools participated in choral and concert band and jazz NPAs, which are music performance assessments through our district, and we are paired with other counties in our district through the state. Our schools also participated in solo and ensemble competitions, and Lake Ware High's Concert Band and Forest High School has two choirs that will go to state competition from district. We also have Young in Art currently exhibited at the Appleton Museum. They opened on March 26th. This features all of our K-12 students, so our students' work is spread throughout the museum, and it will be displayed through Sunday, April 24th. We had, in theater, thespian groups go to state competition, and Forest High School won three superior ratings at thespians. We have Forest High School's Color Guard, who is a part of the marching band and part of our arts programs, who won first in the state competition for the second time, and they're the only ones in our county to have won the state, and they've done it twice already. Over spring break, seventy-one students from Lake Ware High Marching Band represented Florida at the Dallas St. Patrick's Day Parade. Forest High School and Vanguard High School played in the parade honoring our three Olympians. And I have some upcoming events that are exciting. You don't have to pull out your calendars because I will send them to you. We have Jazz on the Square on Monday, the 25th. Forest High School and Lake Ware High Jazz Bands will play. Here at MTI on May 14th, for the first time at seven o'clock, we'll have a dance concert featuring all of our schools that have dance programs working together hosted by Madison Street Academy. And we also have the Superintendent's Art Show coming up on Thursday, the 28th, at 5:30 at the Appleton Museum. So I think all of those events can prove to you how hard our arts teachers work. They work well over their contracted hours, and they are extremely dedicated to their students' success. So can I have the arts teachers that are here tonight stand up and be recognized, please? They're going to stand up again because they had students who were selected into All-State Ensembles. And if you don't know what All-State is, students from around Florida go through a very rigorous audition process, and then they are selected into many varieties of ensembles. And we had quite a showing from Marion County, and this was the first year All-State had come back, so we were all excited to have our students participate again. They spend a few days in Tampa playing and rehearsing, and then they have a concert. So a couple of schools that couldn't be here tonight, Westport High Chorus had six students and Forest High School had three. But tonight here, I have Mr. Isaac Grantley from Osceola Middle and his student Ava Robinson, who was in the Honor Band. From, from Dr. N.H. Jones, Mrs. Wickline is the music teacher there, and she had four students get into the Orf Ensemble where they play mallet instruments like xylophones. We have Avery Briggs, Lucas Gonzalez, Elias Javelona, go ahead and stand up, and Stella Wickline, which might sound familiar because Mom is the music teacher. We have two teachers here from Howard Middle School. Our choir teacher, Haley Christie, had students Maria Viti and Lily Anderson, and the band director, Brittany Schofield, had three students, Elizabeth Graff, Bradley Hitchcock, and Ryan Mrs. Reddick from Bellevue High School had three students also in All-State, Kai Turner, Elizabeth Reese, and Michelle Snow. And I saved Mr. Jones from Forest High School for last. His student, Michael Jagello, has made All-State five years in a row. He played trumpet in the All-State Orchestra for 2022. He is a two-time participant in the All-National Honor Band through the National Association for Music Education, and he was the first chair this year. So congratulations to Michael Jagello. So I think you all want to come down for something very special.
Yes, guys, we want to go down to the first row. We got a treat tonight.
We have the superior-rated show choir from Bellevue High School. They're going to perform Beyond the Sea. They won, they earned superior at state competition, and then they were asked to participate in the honor ensemble at the end of the day. So they were, they were, they got a superior with distinction. And Mrs. Reddick is their director. I'd like to ask everyone, all of our students, to lead us in the pledge this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. School Board, you want to stay down here or go back up? Do they have another song? We were, we were just told to do one. I mean, they could probably pull something out. Can you do one more? Is, yes? Acapulco. Sure, they want you to. Okay, have a seat. Thank you, School Board.
I went to the drive-in, what did I see? A hundred little bennies all staring at me. I was cruising for some lovin'. I got these two wheels and an open road. Pop that clutch, I'm ready to go. Don't stop, stop the music. We ride fast like a bullet. We do anything we want, anytime we want. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. We just ride, ride, ride all day. We're not gonna live any other way. Oh, we're not gonna live any other way. Those one, a two, a one, two, three. Our whoo-whoos riding with me. I got a gang full of bruises all cruising with me, and we're tearing up, we're tearing up, we're tearing up the streets. Don't stop, stop the music. We ride fast like a bullet. We do anything we want, anytime we want. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. We just ride, ride, ride all day. We're not gonna live any other way. So don't stop, stop the music. We ride fast like a bullet. We do anything we want, anytime we want. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. We just ride, ride, ride all day. We're not gonna live any other way. Oh, we're not gonna live any other way. Oh, no, we're not gonna live any other way.
This choir, you gotta get a picture of us with this choir.
All-state students as well?
Yes, yes.
All-state students, come on up.
Okay.
They were so cute.
And it's just, you know, that feel-good music.
You know, it's fun.
Mm-hmm.
Lost half our audience.
And definitely were gonna sing that song.
Boy. We know how to clear a building, don't we?
I know.
Thank you, guys. That was good. That was good. Those kids can sing. Superintendent Gullett, I understand you would like to introduce some new staff members.
I do. Thank you. Good evening, Chair, members of the board, and that is what it's all about, our students. But I would like at this time to introduce one of our new members of our staff. If she'll come forward, it's my privilege to introduce our new Supervisor of Food and Nutrition Services, Jamie Lovett. Let me give you a little bit of background on Ms. Lovett, who I've heard nothing but great things about already. She holds a bachelor's degree in human resource management and a master's degree in business administration, and she's coming to us from Alachua County with more than nine years of experience in food and nutrition services. I also just learned that she has a military background, so I would also like to say to thank her for her service, and we're just privileged to have her here and welcome her to Marion County Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lovett.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Cummings, Vice Chair Campbell, members of the board, Attorney Powers, Ms. Martinez Lopez, and Dr. Gullett. I would like to say thank you for the opportunity to lead the Marion County Public Schools Food and Nutrition Services Department. I am passionate about customer service, exceeding expectations, and creating a food and nutrition services program of operational excellence. Again, thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward to serving the students and families of the Marion County Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Listen, why you, come on, come on, come on. He moving real fast. No, thank you, thank you for coming to our district. We appreciate you being here, and stick around. We are, we're a lively district, so you'll have fun while you're here, so thank you.
Thank you. I'm so happy to be here.
Thank you. I recommend approval of the agenda for the April 12th, 2022, School Board Meeting with the materials in the Board Packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting, with the exception of the following items: D-17.1, D-17.2, D-18.1, D-18.2, excuse me, and D-18.3 that have been placed under discussion, and items C-8.1, C-9.1, C-11.1, C-11.3, and C-12.1, excuse me, that have been pulled for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
It's moved.
Moved by Board Member King.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. All in favor, signify by aye. Aye, passing unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the February 16th, 2022, Special Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
It's moved.
Moved by Board Member Thrower.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member King. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Polls have the same sign, passing unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the February 17th, 2022, Administrative Briefing and Work Session? Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Post have the same sign, passing unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the February 22nd, 2022 School Board Meeting?
I move.
Moved by Board Member King.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Thora. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I move.
Moved by Board Member King.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Thora. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? There being none, any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Aye, passing unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the March 3rd, 2022 Administrative Briefing and Work Session? Moved by Board Member King.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? There being none, any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Aye, passing unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the March 8th, 2022 School Board Meeting?
I move.
Moved by Board Member Thora.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member King. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? There being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Passing unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the March 8th, 2022 Special Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
I move.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member King. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? There being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Aye, passing unanimously. I'll now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board tonight.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the lobby. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board's clerk no later than 5:40 p.m. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to this portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the school board clerk. Before you begin speaking, please state your name for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, Item 6, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. The board is here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrator staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students or their families are also strictly prohibited. A public speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school district. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements. Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez Lopez.
We have eight speakers.
How many?
Eight.
Okay. And from my understanding, there are different topics?
We have four on the same topic, and then the rest are various topics.
Okay. Let's start with the first one.
Ms. Danielle Perez.
I'm Kristin Wilson, Wilson, W-I-L-S-O-N.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
All four of us.
There's a, is it just one for all four? Okay, so give us, give us who we are, who we got. Danielle Perez.
Danielle Perez, P-E-R-E-Z. Katie Burlile, B-U-R-L-I-L-E.
Brittany Jenkins, J-E-N-K-I-N-S.
N?
Kristin Wilson, W-I-L-S-O-N.
So those are the four?
On the same topic.
Same topic, okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, I would like you to imagine I'm a 13-year-old biracial female in the eighth grade. I have no prior discipline referrals, but got into a fight that was started by my white peer. I got 10 days' suspension, she got five.
Imagine that I am a 15-year-old black female student in the 10th grade. There is a student at my school who calls me the N-word daily. I have written statement forms and turned them into discipline multiple times. There are no discipline repercussions for the other student and no reprieve for me. When I told the students to shut the beep up, I got a one-day suspension for obscene language.
Imagine I am a black male senior in high school. I'm an AB honor roll student, varsity athlete with scholarships pending. I have been accepted to a Division I college when my season is over. No matter how hard I work on my assignments, my art teacher continues to give me an F. My peers know that I am failing and have started singling me out. Even after conferencing with my teacher and guidance counselor, when I got another failing grade, I lost my cool. I said that this was BS and pushed my desk against the wall. I received five days' out-of-school suspension for behavior inappropriate in the school setting, and now my scholarship is in jeopardy.
Wouldn't it be nice if these scenarios were just figments of our imagination? In reality, we stand before you as school social workers, and we witness these situations all too often within the schools that we serve. According to the National Association of Social Workers, it is our duty and obligation to stand up for students. The NSAW states that social workers are committed to ending racism through public education, social justice, advocacy, and professional training. We understand cultural and ethnic diversity and strive to end discrimination, oppression, poverty, and other forms of social injustice. As culturally competent and sensitive professionals, we have chosen to use black and brown students as opposed to assuming that all black and brown students are African-American. Not only does our profession as school social workers call us to advocate for our students, Marion County Public Schools has recognized this issue in the strategic plan. Goal two of that plan focuses on creating student safety in a positive learning and working environment. Unfortunately, students are continuing to be deprived of their safe and positive learning environment. When they have to fear due to the color of their skin versus the content of their character, they will receive a discipline referral or harsher consequences. This disparity is vast. Goal one focuses on student success, which includes equality, the quality of being fair and impartial. Our discipline data shows that goal one is far from being met.
The reality is that Marion County Public School can do better. We can do better. The previous scenarios and many other instances are occurring in our schools at an alarming rate. Our district's discipline data from the Student Services Quarterly Meeting shows an overwhelming amount of discipline referrals for our black and brown students. Looking at the elementary level, approximately 50,500 office discipline referrals were received by white students, whereas 102,500 office discipline referrals were received by black and brown students. At the middle, middle school level, again, we see the same trend, with 42,500 ODRs, Office Discipline Referrals, being received by white students as compared to 102,500 received by black and brown students. At the high school level, 25,500 ODRs were received by white students, while 55,000 of our students of color received an office discipline referral during quarter two.
Let's break it down a little bit further. Let's look at three separate schools, all in different areas which you serve and selected at random. Elementary School A has approximately 600 students. While the school is 60% white, black and brown students have 5,500 office discipline referrals, while white, that encompass the total discipline referrals of 6,500. Middle School B has 811 students. They are made up of 30% black and brown students and 60% white. However, their quarter-two discipline data shows that black and brown students population incurred 14,000 office discipline referrals, while white students only account for 5,500.
High School C has a total of 1,637 students and is comprised of 41% Caucasian and 30% black and brown students. When looking at their quarter-two discipline data, black and brown students account for 8,500 office discipline referrals, while Caucasians account for a mere 3,000. We stand before you today, asking and begging for change. We need culturally responsive techniques and trainings for all staff, especially those in discipline. We need to do better for all our children in Marion County Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you for that information.
Melanie Slaugther.
Yes. Ms. Slaugther has an advanced, prepared packet with some instructions to complete the Common Black College Application, which she provided courtesy copies of for the board members, and you have them at your table. I also have a copy here for the superintendent. I neglected to put that on your desk. I'll bring it to you.
And before, I'm sorry, Ms. Slaugther.
Yes, sir.
Before you go, before you go, those social workers, if you guys can hang around a little bit, please. Thank you.
Yes, Chair. May I have the contact information, please, for that group?
Yes. Ladies, please make sure y'all get your contact information to Mr. Christian for Board Member Brownie. I'm sorry, Ms. Slaugther.
You're fine, you're fine. Melanie Slaugther, S-L-A-U-G-H-T-E-R. I am before the board to, this evening, to bring your attention to something that I think, Coach Farmer at Vanguard High School, my son attends and is on the football team, he makes it a point to take not only students that are going to be recruited by colleges, but all of the football players to college visits. He's taken them to several universities in Florida this year and outside the state to look at schools. His position is if you wanna, if you have to see it, to be it. If you're going to go to college and advance your career, especially as an African-American student, you need to see the opportunities that are available. The Black College Application is an application that applies instantly to over 60 HBCUs, historically black colleges and universities in America. For $20, they can fill out the application, and for a $20 fee, they can instantaneously apply to over 60 historically black colleges. The person that designed this app and was a guidance counselor at one of these historically black colleges when he founded this application 20 years ago, graduated from high school with a 1.9 GPA. But because he did well on his standardized test, he was able to get into an historically black college. He was able to get a college degree. He was able to work in college admissions, and he was able to create something like this for not only students that are African-American, but all students to apply to historically black colleges to see the opportunities that were out there. We had a Caucasian student get a football scholarship to a historically black college this year because he got to look at the opportunities that were out there, and he's going to college for free at an historically black college to play football. So I would like, because everybody in Marion County schools that's a junior has an opportunity to take the SAT next, tomorrow, actually, I would like the board to consider pushing every child to apply for college. And if they don't have the funds to do it, I would suggest using Title I money to pay the $20 fee for those who can't afford it and to help them fill out this application. It is a stripped-down version of the Common App and the Coalition App that most people apply to when they go to college. They have to have transcripts which guidance counselors can help them with, and they've got to have, obviously, their test scores, but everybody's got the chance to have one now because they're all taking it tomorrow, hopefully. And we can give them the opportunity to see what their future could be in a historically black college and have the opportunity, regardless of what their grades are, quite frankly, and their SAT scores are, to have the opportunity to go to college if they want to. That's number one. And I've provided copies of everybody so you can look at the schools. You can see how to apply and things like that. The second thing I've been asked to talk about today is the weighted honors classes versus AP, ACE, and IB, and other, and dual enrollment that we have in the schools. Colleges don't weight them the way that we do here. You don't get a point added to your GPA for an honors class when you apply to college. It's a half a point. And all the other programs are a point. So when, when your GPA is recalculated when you apply to these schools, what you think you have when you apply is not really the reality of the situation. And I think that we need to be, as a district, telling students when they take an honors class versus an IB, an ACE, an AP, or a dual enrollment class, colleges are not going to weigh that the same. Because when they send off their applications and they think they have a certain GPA, and then it gets recalculated at Florida State, or Florida, or some of these other schools, the grades they think they have, they don't have. They need to go in knowing if they take this class, this is how they're going to do it. So I think that we need to have a work session or something and at least try to get us on the same basis for that with regards to that. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you very much.
Hold on, hold on, Ms. Slaugther.
I know who's gonna do it. All right.
I wanna, I want to pause and tell you thank you for being an advocate for these students, these student athletes, but not only student athletes, students at Vanguard. And most of this transcends beyond just Vanguard. These students in Marion County get opportunities that they may not know. This, this Common Black College Application is truly a tremendous app. As a graduate of a HBCU, I understand the importance of these type of resources for our kids. So I wanna, I just want to applaud you for making sure that this stuff gets out. I'm hoping, I'm hoping that this is not just confined to Vanguard High School, that other coaches are doing the same thing around the district and making sure that these kids get opportunities that they may not have gotten. And this one-time $20 fee, I can't, I can't, I can't commit my fraternity, but my boss list is in the back of the building. But I'm sure if there are some kids that need the $20 fee, we can help them with that. I'm sure of that. And so if there are some kids out there that need some help, please let us know. And I'm sure there are some pastors in here too as well that will make sure.
I'm sure there are, and I would, I would just ask the district to consider giving us some guidance counselors and some resources at the schools where these kids are so they can come down and fill out the application at school, get us some volunteers, let's help them do it. There's plenty of kids that need volunteer hours. Let's, they gotta do applications to themselves next year. Let's get these kids in and let, let them get them applied and get this app out there and show them you can go to college no matter what your grades are.
Right, because a lot of these kids probably don't even realize that college is not an option to them because they don't see it as a way of being able to get there, to afford it, or to the process. So thank you for bringing this to light. Thank you for putting this out there. And I'm, I'm asking the superintendent that this gets to all of our schools and that hopefully all of our ADs will know about this and will be pushing it through their athletic programs as well.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Wow, before you go, you're not getting away that quick. Wow, congratulations for bringing this forward. There are so many ways, and I guess we can go in any direction, right? It isn't necessarily racial.
It's not, and anybody can apply. I just, I'm just trying to get it out there so that anybody that wants to apply can apply. For $20, anybody of any race, any color can apply to these schools. And they have the resources to help non-traditionally academically inclined people to get a college degree if they want one. No matter what their grades are, no matter what their test scores are, they care about these kids just like they do at Vanguard, and I'm sure all the other schools as well. I just know what I see every day with Coach Farmer. But if you push these kids, they will achieve. They will do what they need to do. You've got to push them.
Okay.
If they are pushed, they will do it.
I'm loving what you're saying, and I just want to, I want to add to that anecdotally. Everyone comes from a group. I was the United States Navy. DD 214, somebody lets you know, you go in. That's the equivalent of an SAT score. You're in, you make the dean's list, you nail it, you get it done. Four years later, you've got a degree. That's the kind of leadership that can come from someone like yourself and those people that you're asking to be able to be involved. So you bet, the $20, get with us. We'll figure that one out.
Yes, sir.
We'll figure that one out. Nobody's gonna not go because of 20 bucks. I guarantee you. Not if, not if the reverend's around, or myself, or any of these other board members. You bet. You bet.
Thank you, Mr. Brownie.
Thank you.
For committing your money. Thank you.
You bet. You bet. That's what money's for. It's a powerful tool. It works.
Thank you, Ms. Slaughter.
Thank you, Ms. Slaughter.
Elena.
Gary White?
What a great message. Gary. Gary White, ninety-two eighty Southwest Ninety-Six Court Road, four, three, four, four, eight, one. Been a special evening because one of the things that I am going to talk about is touching that student. I am with Tea Party. I give a report every Tea Party on school board meetings and what's going on. And you guys, I know most of you better than some of my good friends, and some of you have become my good friends. So that's very good. We ask again for parents to get involved. We need, like tonight, parents to get involved. Teachers to find out and let people know how we touch that child in the classroom. We have got to attack that child in the classroom with learning information that will help him grow and figure out how to help him as best we can, the individual. We want parents to get involved. I've asked parents to please come to this meeting. This is a gigantic county. They've got a gigantic district. And just as this evening, some things they aren't always aware of. They need to be told the things that are going on out there with our individual kids so that they can respond. Because these are people who will respond to individual problems of children. The school board can find a way to teach your kids and help the individual. We are trying to help parents help this board say, how can we help that student? All the time I have been coming here, it seems so little, and this is the reason I say this is a special evening, so few times that anybody gives you information on how to get to that student in that chair in that classroom. We have not contemplated at all that individuals, what we need to help that teacher bring that student, yes, grades up, we do yes and no spending. I'm sorry, you guys, but I've called for examination of spending, and we're working there. We're going to get there. But you know, most of the things we talk about is, are we going to spend this much? Are we going to spend that much? Are we going to let that in or that out? It's very rarely anybody talking about, what can we do to touch that child in that classroom and help that teacher? And so on the second question, let have, let's have more tell us how to bring us from sixty, Sixtieth out of sixty-nine districts in the state of Florida. And again, this has been a great evening so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Steve Swett?
Good evening. My name is Steve Swett, S-W-E-T-T. And I'm a little out of sync here. I didn't know you were going to vote on the Acceleration Academy tonight, but it's okay. I just hope this, what I came to do was to urge you to do a deep dive and do your homework. Do you know, have you contacted individual, do you know what the actual graduation rate is in Homestead, Florida Academy in 2020? It was sixteen percent. Bethel, Washington, their four-year average, they've been there for quite a while, the district, twenty-six percent. Have you contacted, there's seven acceleration academies in Florida, Homestead, Miami Dade's got three, Orange County's got two, they got a big one, Sarasota's got one, Pensacola, and Port St. Lucie. Did you know what the actual graduation rate is that this Acceleration Academy does? It looks pretty dismal to me, from what I see. Now, I have some emails I was going to send you, and I still will tomorrow. They're from Steve for Good, and I'm going to send them to your individual accounts. I'm assuming, and I'm hoping you guys did a deep dive, and you know what you're voting on. This is a C-level change. You are going to take public funds, state public funds, and let a private company have access to them. Now, this is a good business model they have. Joseph Wise and David Sunstrom, they've got charter schools in Chicago, they have ERDC, and Atlantic Research Party. They have a multi-good network of companies they've strung together. Nothing wrong with that. It is a great business model. I'm not sure if it's a great education model, but that's what they do. And it's like the military-industrial complex. They cater to school districts and school system. This is an emotional issue, I know. County France is nineteen sixty. The heart has a mind of its own. But are we doing the right thing for everyone, including the taxpayers? Have we really done the homework on this? Wake County, North Carolina, up in Raleigh, they're progressive. They had it for two years. They shut it down. We have a virtual school that's doing pretty good. Could we incorporate that into the system for these non-disciplinary issues? And if this program is so good that they can take these hard-to-reach, at-risk children that dropped out and have disciplinary problems, and they can graduate them, then we ought to look at giving them some regular average students. They'll knock it out of the park. And I'm sure you've done your homework, and I know you're going to vote tonight, but this thing moved lightning quick. It really has. This is a major C-level change. What does it take? Who's been checking up on these schools nationwide? You know, and like I said, I don't know because I'm going to send you various emails. I've only had the power of Google. And what I've divined, I have concerns. And I'm not saying there's anything wrong or anything. I just see a performance issue that I don't see as being addressed, because everybody gets raptured by, well, we get money from the state, so it's not in our budget, and we're doing something for the kids. And I get the empathetic, I do. I, you know, you can just feel it. And it's sort of like Mike Lindell. Okay, you got MyPillow, and then you start selling everything else. So I hope you've checked it out. I'll send you my information tomorrow. I didn't realize I was this far behind the eight ball. But when you vote tonight, have you done your homework? Do you really know what you're voting on? Do you know the success rate of this Acceleration Academy? Do you know their history? Do you know their background? Do you know their business model? Do you know the cost for average student in Florida, how much money they're going to get from the state? Do you know where they're going to get their students from to finance this? They're going to have to have a self-provoked and aiding thread meal to keep going. So, and if they're that good, and we're going to privatize this, can we look forward to say, well, let's take the ninth graders that aren't doing too well and put them in the Acceleration Academy? So be careful. It's a tough decision. You're the deciders. If I was, you know, my view on this puppy is I wouldn't view forward, from what I know out here in Google Land, I don't have your background, your connections, your staff. I have none of that. But I do not feel good about it. So make a good decision tonight. I know what's going to happen, but you're the deciders, and good luck, and take heed with what I say.
Dr. Barbara Brooks?
Greetings. I am Dr. Barbara J. Brooks, B-R-O-O.
Dr. Brooks, pull the mic down. There you go.
I didn't want to get ecstatic.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you hear me now? I am a, see, I am a retired school social worker, guidance counselor, and classroom teacher, but I continue to teach in my nonprofit organization, Ramal Education and Social Services Incorporated. And before I came to the school board meeting, I was at Howard Academy Community Center, where we started our tutoring. And so I'm very happy about the students who came tonight, and I hope even more come so that we in our community can help our students. When the question was asked, how are we touching kids? That's how you touch kids. You find out what the problems are, and you roll up your sleeve. Not everybody can do or have the skills, but they certainly can give some time, or they can give, write a check, and support those programs in our community. I've come before the school board before, in two thousand nineteen, again, in twenty twenty. And basically, I am recapping what I said in those particular times, and I am saluting the school social workers because I am a master level school social worker, and I have been for fifty-two years. So, and we talked at that particular time, in that we look at our school social workers and really define the role of the school social workers. Because when we talk about parent engagement, when we talk about the referrals and the problems that our students are having, I challenge you to look, how are we utilizing the school social workers in our school system? And the school social workers tonight outlined some of the things. When I came before you before, again, in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, I asked to take a look and ask, why do we not have a school social worker in every school, especially in the struggling schools? School social workers and the responsibilities that they have, if they're utilizing effectively, could be the great resource that we need in our public schools to deal with our struggling, at-risk kids. They're the ones who can make the contacts with the parents. We talk about parent engagement, but what have we outlined? Have we defined a plan of action for parent engagement? We talk about we need the parents to attend meetings. What's our plan of action? We need to collaborate with those programs and services and people in our community who are doing the work, who know the students. For example, when the school social workers met with myself as the chairperson of the Education Committee of the NAACP Branch Five, One, One, Four, we had a very good meeting because we can collaborate on those issues that deal with our brown and black kids and the whole referral process in the public schools here at Marion County. And we found, and we identified some areas in which I would like for you to consider in terms of having a task force, not just another committee, but actually a working committee, that we identify, what are the behaviors that are causing these kids to be referred and record numbers? We cannot overlook this. These are our students. These are our future. We want them to be productive citizens. Yes, we want them to read, write, and know arithmetic, but we really want them to be productive citizens and be all that they can be. And so we need to provide them with the tools. If they are not in the classrooms, they are not learning. So what's the plan of action? It has to come from the, from the school board to organize this committee that composed of teachers, parents, students, business leaders, people in the community who are working with these students. I encourage you to really come up with a plan of action and not just say that we need parents to be engaged, not just say, look at the data and pass it on, but what's your plan of action? We've come before you before. And so this is twenty twenty-two. We should not go twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four and talk about the same problems and not have a plan of action. Because if we are looking at this strategically, we should be able to say, we did this, number one, number two, number three, and see what works. I really don't know what the plan of action other than to keep presenting the problem. I think we all know what the problem is. I, for one, am going to do my part, but I'm only one. I'm in the community. If I see that there is a need for our students to be tutored, to be mentored, for scholarships, whatever, I just hope that we will do more than talk about it. But each of us, it's imperative that we do our part in our organizations, within our churches, within our circles, that we advocate for our students because we want them to be productive citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Brooks.
Chair, may I have the contact information, please?
Yes. We'll make sure you get it, Mr. Brownie. Elena, that's it. Thank you for all of our comments on tonight. I'm sure that there will be some additional comments tonight, later on tonight, in some regards to some of these subjects that were brought up tonight. May I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two recommended instructional materials for adoption of sixteen specified courses?
They're moved.
Moved by Board Member Thoreau. Seconded by Board Member King. Superintendent?
Thank you, Chair. Members of the board, instructional materials are adopted according to a process defined in state statute. Sixteen titles for sixteen courses are recommended for adoption this evening.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two recommended instructional materials for adoption of sixteen specified courses? Any discussion? Ready for vote? All in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposites have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items C eight point one through C sixteen point one, with the exception of items D seventeen point one, D seventeen point two, D eighteen point one, D eighteen point two, and D eighteen point three that have been placed under discussion, and items C eight point one, C nine point one, C eleven point one, C eleven point three, and C twelve point one that have been pulled for discussion. May I have a motion?
They're moved.
Moved by Board Member King.
Seconded.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. All in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposites have the same signs. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to discuss and approve a letter of intent for a county proposal to establish a park on Old Reddick High School? May I have a motion? Moved by Board Member King.
Seconded.
Seconded by Board Member Thoreau. Any discussion?
At our, at our previous meeting on point, we had a, had a sample letter that I indicated needed to be updated, that it be referencing a license agreement of twenty-five to thirty years, as opposed to, that one was a thirty to fifty-year lease. And again, making sure that it was non-binding. The board gave me authority to draft such a letter. I have done so and am ready to send that letter of intent off to the town of Reddick. I did not include it on the agenda tonight, the draft letter, as the board had already indicated that in the interest of time, they needed me to draft something that was similar to what was present there, and keeping it relatively open-ended with the terms. So if there's anything else regarding terms, it's still in the drafting process. So if anybody has any specific input, I know that Board Member Roundy had indicated he wanted to speak to them, but that's all kind of more for the lease itself. As to a letter of intent, I'm prepared to move forward.
Thank you. Mr. Brownie?
Yes. And I did have a chance to talk, and I'm going to talk further. And just, and Mr. Powers, Attorney Powers, did hit the key item here, and that is that this meets a technical need for timing that had to do with funding, but it is not permission yet. And so that everyone understands that. We are, we are starting down that road, but those details are going to be key. And so far, it looks, it looks promising, and so let's just, you know, continue down the road. But that's the key to it. This is, this opens a door, a technical door, for a requirement they have, Reddick has, for getting the funding, or holding the funding, I should say, that will likely come into play here. Thank you.
And if I may, I will, I will read what's a draft. Again, it's not something that's, it's subject completely to any terms that the board wishes to include within it. The draft, however... The draft, however, would indicate it would be, uh, sent to Steven Rogers, Council President of the Town of Reddick. And keeping in structure of the previous, um, previously referenced letter, it would indicate, Dear Mr. Rogers, at its April seventh, twenty twenty-two work session, the school board authorized me to provide you with this letter of intent. It's the intention of the School Board of Marion County to work cooperatively with the Town of Reddick to develop a long-term, twenty-five to thirty-five-year land license agreement for a parcel of property located at the Old Reddick Collier School Site. The land license agreement will not require rental payments to be made by the Town of Reddick. It is the school board's understanding that the Town of Reddick will have full responsibility for all permitting, improvements, and maintenances of the property. This parcel of property will be utilized as the Town of Reddick Community Park to be constructed with grant funds available to the Town of Reddick for this purpose. In the next few weeks, you will provide me with the specifics of this project so that we can work to prepare a draft land license agreement for review by staff and the school board. We look forward to working with you in this worthwhile endeavor. It will benefit many residents of that area of the county. Yours truly, Jeremy T. Powers, School Board Attorney. So, if there is, uh, any addition, deletion, or correction that you wish to have to such a letter of intent, um, I will gladly entertain that now. Otherwise, I will send it for them to meet their deadline.
Ms. Campbell?
I just had a quick question, and I, this is from lack of knowledge. Was it called Reddick Collier, or was it the Old Reddick High School? Did it actually have Collier in the name?
Well, for the purpose of the license agreement, there's several things we need to clarify, and that's why I purposely kept it vague, one of them being, um, who has authority to, to contract? In fact, the school board has authority on our side. Would it be the Town of Reddick, or would it be Marion County Parks and Recreations? We're not really sure because Marion County Parks and Recreation has done things for them in the past to assist. So, that, we're not sure about that factor. Another is specifically within what we, I've, I've vaguely kept the term Reddick Collier School Site. What I've said is, a parcel of property located at the Old Reddick Collier School Site, because there are numerous parcels within that larger parcel. And so, we would need to come to some agreement as to the terms, but that doesn't need to be necessarily included within our letter of intent. So, that's a good question, and that's one of the reasons I purposely left it kind of open-ended.
Right. I just wanted to inquire if it actually was in fact called Reddick Collier on that side of the road, or if it was just called Reddick High School, or the Old Reddick School, or so. That was my question, and without knowing the history. Thank you.
And that is definitely something that, uh, for that, along with the issues I mentioned before, are things that will need to be clarified in the longer term while we're preparing a license agreement. But this wouldn't essentially commit us to any specific parcel within there. We may choose to allocate a portion or the entire, uh, parcel, or, you know, they may only have need for a corner of it. I, it's, it's open-ended at this point, and I require further input from them in order to do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, uh, uh, two questions, uh, let's see, uh, um, I, I know there's some, there's some issues up there. I do not have them detailed out, uh, that we might want to negotiate. We might, we do have some obligations, uh, maintenance, insurance, uh, other things that in, in the area. So, we've got to be sure we, we pull this whole thing together, not just the site. And, um, uh, time, is the time, do I understand this correctly? I know we have a time issue to get this intent out, but is there a time issue that we have to rush? Like, do we have sixty days or so to pull all this together on the other, on these other details?
I believe that's the case, yes. But I will tell you, although I will make every attempt to expedite, if there is not time for us to do it right, there is not time for the project to be done.
Thank you.
Because we have to make certain that a lot of these issues are, are laid out clearly. And so, I, in, in advance, sort of, uh, in our letter of intent, it seems to be the intent of all parties, but I laid out in advance in the letter of intent that, um, that the Town of Reddick would have full responsibility for permitting improvements, maintenance of the property. We also talked about it not requiring rental payments, but that it may or may not require assistance with insurance, risk management, things like that. So, again, left it open-ended because those are all the questions that need to be answered in order to go through it properly. There's no reason-
If I were gonna jeopardize it because of time, I would like to know that.
Absolutely.
On that, on that score at one of our meetings, we just bring it up in some regard-
Absolutely.
Because it's, I don't want to let it slip by because we missed a deadline, but I don't want to rush if there is no deadline on that portion, uh, the detailed portion of the project.
Right. I see no right, no reason why it could not proceed both quickly and efficiently. But of course, that also requires that, I mean, this is, this is, uh, the Town of Reddick wants to do this partially in conjunction with the County Commission, and that's really something for them to discuss, work out, who's doing what. And I'll be happy to provide input and assist, and of course, to draft the documents that we need. But that's going to, it's gonna require some, uh, some, uh, expedited behavior on their part in order to assure that we are able to get whatever timelines that they need committed as well.
Thank you.
So, I will, I will certainly, if it's Board Member's question, I certainly will ensure that, uh, that the process is expedited on our end, but also that no, that, that speed doesn't lead to, uh, anything being undone or done improperly.
Excellent. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Attorney Power. There being no further discussion, are we ready to vote? All in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Opposites have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the agreement with the Marion County Children's Alliance?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. King.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Thoreau. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Opposites have the same signs. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the Amendment One to the Construction Manager Contract Guaranteed Maximum Price for Construction of a New Central Warehouse Project Number Twenty One O Two?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member King. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Aye. May I have a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the International Union of Painters and Allied Trades Local One Zero One Zero and the School Board of Marion County, twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-two?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Thoreau. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Opposites have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the collection bargaining agreement between the Marion Education Association and the School Board of Marion County, twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-two? Moved by Board Member King.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the grant application, Get There Faster Career Dual Enrollment Expansion? Moved by Board Member King.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Thoreau. Mr. Brown, I understand you pulled Item C eight point one. You wish to have further discussion?
Yes, Chair. I do, thank you. The, um, the, uh, much of what's been brought up here tonight and what we do is, is regular course of business, is education and money. And, uh, this is a significant amount of money and a, an enormous amount of opportunity. And it, it's what we're all about in terms of education, especially if you can get a BOGO, you can get two for the price of one, uh, or something in that, in that similar arena. And I really think it needs, uh, folks out there need to know that we have this program and that it is functioning. And I think it's a, an enormous bargain because you, you, you really, you really hit a home run with it. So, this is, uh, this is dual enrollment, and, uh, it's, it's, like you come out of this, uh, when you have the capacity, the capability to pull it off, uh, this is just an enormous opportunity, and education's our job. So, I'm, I'm just thrilled to be a part, uh, of this kind of, um, or if you will, example. Uh, it's just a high-end example that's, that's beautiful. Uh, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposites have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve agreement with Acceleration Academy LLC?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member King. Mr. Brown, I understand you pulled Item C nine point one for further discussion.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Uh, yes, uh, now, this is an item that I am in favor of, uh, and I think the community is in favor of it. Anytime you can move a portion of your student population toward, um, toward graduation, it's a good thing. We, we, we had some, uh, some excellent comments tonight, uh, from the floor, and I really appreciate that level of homework. It's, it's sort of where I am on it. I took the time, uh, to dig into this. It kind of came on me quick, and I think it came on the population, our, our community quick, uh, but that's all right. Speed sometime is, is, uh, is great, uh, and not a negative. I see this as a drop-up situation rather than a dropout situation in terms of opportunity, and it needs to be spoken about a little bit, uh, because we're kicking it off. Yes, it'll be marketed and all, but there is a, um, uh, there's a positive side to, to alternative choices when a, when a student makes a choice, uh, to not complete their education. Sometimes, uh, there's gonna be five deviations out from the mean. You're gonna have situations, and that builds up. And once in a while, it really pays off, maybe to go back and look at that whole population and see if maybe circumstances have changed, uh, maybe there's an opportunity to, uh, uh, the, uh, to polish things up a little bit, and there might be a, a new need that was not there back in the, at the point when the person dropped up to something they thought was there, and then it wasn't. So, I'm, I'm really excited. The one drawback, and I, and I know Mark is here tonight, if he wants to talk about if the board would want it, but, uh, probably not necessary, but it's, um, the idea that we don't send people over to this program unless, uh, uh, like, I, I don't want this to become a dropping zone. Like, you're not good enough to get through the normal, get over there to this program. That really scares me, and it, and it really need, we need to be vigilant. So, I'm looking at it with great care, but I'm also looking at it like a, uh, an opportunity to get, if you get these folks, maybe you were going into the military, maybe you're going into college or something, and you happen to realize now you need it, or your life situation changed. Well, this is a great opportunity. And sixteen percent, uh, perhaps, twenty percent, twenty-five percent, five percent even, anytime you have a, a, a problem situation, you can't pull. It isn't like a normal sample. So, I'm very excited about this, uh, because I'm looking at it as a solution, uh, not as a potential problem, and we're gonna have to keep our eyes on these folks, uh, because they're dealing with our greatest treasure, and that is our children. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I do want to comment on this because some comments came from the floor, uh, in regards to this one, as far as, um, money being spent on this particular, uh, item. From what I'm reading, have read, um, this doesn't cost the district money. This is from FTE money and F E F P money. So, um, what we heard earlier was not accurate. It does not cost the district, um, money. So, are we ready for vote? I'm sorry, Ms. Thoreau.
Oh, uh, thank you, Chair. I, I believe at the foundation, this is why we needed such a well-defined, and what we now have, strategic plan, because each and every student is our responsibility and is just as important as any other student. So, to me, this is another tying in the pitchfork of making sure that no kid falls through. And this came on relatively suddenly, if you're on the outside looking in, but we've had other drop-back in programs for years. It can be a tough group to move. You don't generally see the types of graduation successes as some other programs, just by nature of the population, that, uh, these specialized programs are serving. But the way I look at it is, anytime you can get FaceTime with a student, you have the opportunity to plant seeds, you have the opportunity to inspire, you have the opportunity to mentor, you have the opportunity to teach, you have the opportunity to get that kid on a better path tomorrow than what they were on today. I appreciate Dr. Gullett, since you are the one in charge of the day-to-day operating of our school systems, your due diligence as well, and, and your familiarity, um, with Acceleration Academy, with your direct, um, communication with them, and, and bringing this program to, to Marion County. I'm excited about it. I'm looking forward to visiting it. I think that the Cascades, if that's where it ends up actually being placed, is, is a wonderful setting. And I'm just really, really excited that we have another program like this to, to bring forth with kids that we've essentially already lost. So, this is another opportunity for them to, to not stay lost. So, thank you, Dr. Gullett, for this.
Vice Chair Campbell?
Yes, I, I believe because we did have public comments specific about this one, I also wanted to speak on it. Thank you, uh, Board Member Browning and Ms. Thoreau and, and Reverend Cummings for all speaking, uh, about this. I did do my due diligence. I did reach out to another school district that has these. I, I, I did learn, uh, information from them, and actually, some of the questions that I asked in our work session specifically came from questions that were posed by that other district. So, I got all of those questions answered, and, and so, as a board member, that's our responsibility to, um, some of the, um, I don't want to say allegations and accusations, but some of the comments that were made this evening in reference to board members not doing their due diligence, uh, please understand that we are. We all have, and we understand, uh, that while this also is not costing the district any money, uh, these are students that right now we have lost. And, and anybody that can go out and rescue them and do anything we can, just, Ms. Thoreau said it very eloquently, that, uh, graduation rates are not going to be very high on students who have already chosen to drop out of school. So, if we can move the needle on one of those students that chose us to drop out of school, that's one that we've saved. And so, even one matters. And, and so, uh, it's like the starfish analogy. We all know that, that, you know, that one is, is gonna matter. And so, for that reason alone, knowing that we could change one person's life because of this, uh, we're, I'm definitely moving forward with approving this program, and I think it's gonna be successful in this community.
Chair?
Mr. Brown?
Yes. Yes, uh, and, and I just want to accent on this, that the dropout, I've always, just anecdotally, I dropped up to the U.S. Navy. I G E D'd. I went to the university. That's the kind of drop-up that sometimes is a home run. This can be a drop-up. This can be a solution to specific anecdotal, uh, uh, circumstances in a life, and that's the beautiful part. Leaving something is sometimes a very positive move. And if you leave and go into something, U.S. Navy, U.S. Marine Corps, or this organization, it, it can be very possible. There's a lot of ways, uh, to get to a goal. So, I, I, I really appreciate the conversation on this because I could not let this slip by without people. Everybody out there has an, an opinion on it, and this helps, I think, everybody hearing from the board. Thank you.
Just, just one last thing, um, you know, all money comes from somewhere, and there's nothing in this life that, that's free, and even though it's FTE money and F E F P money- that's free. And even though it's FTE money and FEFP money, wouldn't it be so much better if the kids had been captured the first time and enamored enough with school and what we had to offer that we didn't need a program like this? So make no mistake, it's this board member's intention for this to work, for us to have high expectations of its success. We're going to vote on it tonight, and if it passes, then my intention is to support it a hundred percent. So I just kind of wanted to make that point because every single board member sitting here, and every person that's not a board member sitting up here, is a taxpayer too. So that weighs heavily on me when we consider different programs in terms of bang for the buck. So that's just another point that I wanted to mention. Sometimes I feel like there's this wall that shouldn't be there between all of us in the community, really. You know, in the end, we're all expected and required to pay taxes, and in the end, I think we all expect our students to be successful, and we're all pulling on the same side of the rope. So again, this is just another tying in the pitchfork, and I'm excited to vote now.
Ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed have the same sign, pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the adjust pricing and expenditure increase request for bid three seven seven eight GM carpet and vinyl flooring supply and installation due to volatility in the marketplace. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell.
Seconded.
Seconded by Board Member King. Mr. Brown, I understand you pull item C 11.1. You wish to have further discussion?
Yes, I did. Thank you, Chair. The key here is, you know, yes, we talk about education, but we also talk about money. And we have volatility in the marketplace. We have volatility in all of the funds. We have volatility every place. Okay, I got that. We have inflation. We need to really pay attention to this, and we need to not contribute to the inflation. Inflation numbers move around in the six, eight, ten. Certain things can go up higher, used cars, oil, filling up your gas tank, that type of thing. But this one is like a forty percent increase. And the idea of that, while I'm sympathetic to any businessman or any taxpayer, I am very, very concerned when we would think that just because there's some news going on and we have some price increases, that suddenly we adjust to those. And one of the issues is volatility so affects, one of the reasons we're doing, we want to do this, volatility so affects the vendor, that continued performance would result in substantial loss or financial hardship. Well, tough. You know, just in life. It's tough for me, and in business, it's tough for all of us when we go up to the pump and all. So you don't get an automatic bump, and I do not want to contribute to inflation with a forty percent move. And at least, that's what it appears to be. It wouldn't maybe go that far, but it appears that way. So I'm not in favor of this kind of thinking. I would say we go back to the drawing board and figure it out. I guarantee you carpets have not gone up forty percent, and they're not likely to. And we may need to kind of hang loose a little while because I think there's going to be some serious reductions in prices, but I have no crystal ball. So for those reasons, I just think it's too much of an increase, and I cannot support this item. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
If I'm, correct me if I'm wrong here, but we are approving the possible, I mean, so we're approving that they have the ability to spend up to that amount. But certainly, if there is a reduction in cost, and certainly if there is, you know, inflation does stop or whatever, and things start calming down, and the availability of these products does come in at a lesser rate, then they're certainly not going to spend the money just because we're approving the potential for them to spend up to that amount. Am I mistaken on that?
You're absolutely correct.
I think that is correct. However, as in reality, you, in business, you do not lower your prices unless forced to, unless you have to bid. It's competitive. That's the idea. And so when you open, like, cost-plus type thinking, that's a disaster unless you happen to be Rockefeller's child or you have some unlimited amount of money, and it doesn't matter, or perhaps you're governmental and you have taxpayers are unlimited source, or the federal, perhaps you can just print it. So this is kind of a theme. Be tough. When you bid, you bid. That's it. They either win the deal or they don't win the deal. I've won bids and then lost money on the item. Okay, that's part of the game. You do the same thing with our funds in the stock market for your retirements. That's the name of the game. So I don't cover both sides of the fence with money that doesn't belong to me. So that's the idea here, is we've got to be tough, and that's just where I am. I can see doing it, perhaps, if you believe in it, but I don't. Thank you.
I think our schools are in desperate need of carpet and vinyl. If you've been around to see some of the schools around, you would probably agree. Some of them are just downright disgusting. I have also found that, as hopeful as I am, I wish sometimes that supplies and materials would go down in price. It's not very common that I've seen that. And, you know, I don't even think it would be impossible to see a forty percent now, and then next year, I mean, I hope it's not. I don't have a clue what it will be, and I don't think any of us do. But I know what we need to take care of now. I don't think we need to turn a blind eye to the needs of our schools that desperately need these items. So I'm comfortable voting on this this evening.
Ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed have the same sign?
No.
Passes four one.
Let me clarify. All opposed, the sign would be no, and just for the purpose of the vote. I mean, if it's a voice vote, so.
I'm sorry?
The all opposed would be the voice vote. He indicated no, and you'd said same sign, aye. So just a matter of technique.
So please correct the record to state that Mr. Browning was the opposing vote, and his no would be aye. Okay.
Help me understand what that is.
I'm sorry. It's just, in a voice vote?
Yes.
Whatever the chair says. However, all opposed, all in favor, typically, the standard under Robert's rules is all in favor signify by aye, and all opposed with nay. But if the chair says all, you know,
Same sign.
Green and orange, just fine.
Okay, then you have to.
But he said aye, and you said no. So I just wanted to clarify that that was a no vote.
A no vote, yes. What is appropriate for us, Chair? Do you want an aye, a yes, on the no, or a no, or on the no?
I always say same sign, so.
Okay.
Opposed have the same sign.
But is no understood? Is that okay?
If the chair says same sign, then just make the same sign.
Oh, then make it same sign? Okay, I'll say aye, which means no. Okay, thank you. Okay, I just want to be in the game. Yeah, I want to be appropriate, speak properly, yes.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the bid three nine two two GM audio and video equipment?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell.
Seconded.
Seconded by Board Member King. Mr. Brown, I understand you pull item C 11.13. You wish to have further discussion?
It was Ms. Thoreau.
I'm sorry, Ms. Thoreau. I'm sorry.
I just want to make sure it was noted correctly.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Yes, okay, audio, audiovisual, this is changing, so. It's an industry that is changing, and I think right here we can tell. Look at the way we're set up. This is a, what I call a congressional C-span program now, and it really changes things. I don't want us to get stuck in the old way. I don't want to go with too far down, too long a term because things technologically are changing. From two eighty-five to five hundred thousand, it's a difficult step for me. Not that I'm not in favor of the items. What I'm not in favor of is this kind of a cost increase and going out too far with with too much money, too much product in a changing environment. There's so many things that are just, prices are coming down, Wi-Fi service, I guess that's what you call it, with, when it comes in and it operates, your equipment is Wi-Fi, or a cable. Let's call it cable. Somebody that's more technologically sharp on it, but some of those prices are being cut in half around the marketplace. So, and we also have the new satellite system that's coming into play, and just so much that's taking place that I would say, no, I'm not in favor of increases. I'm in favor of decreases with more value. And we've just got to dig in and understand that, I think, long-term because there's a lot of wonderful things happening out there that can save us a fortune and give us greater value, and maybe teach the students the newer items, the newer way, the better way, for example. So I'm not in favor of this for that reason. I want it, I would want it to be smaller. However, I do want the items. I just want them in smaller batches and not open up the door to huge increases. Thank you, Chair.
No further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed by the sign of nay.
Nay. Thank you, Chair. I appreciate that, sir.
Passes four one. May I have a motion to approve the auto liability settlement for FS? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell.
Seconded.
Seconded by Board Member Brown. Mr. Brown, I understand you pull this item C 12.1. You wish to have further discussion?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yes, this item is, I think it's a great moment to talk about and bring forward like a legal notice. This is a very positive situation, and it's one that I see on a regular basis here, and it's our legal system, our legal program, our operation. We spend a lot of money. It costs money. But when things are well-handled, I think it needs a Bravo. It needs a.
Board Member Brown.
Recognition.
Can I, please?
Yes, sir.
I don't think we need to celebrate this situation because of the things that happened in this situation. I understand you're celebrating legal. I get what you're saying, but some of the things that were involved in this, I don't think it's appropriate for us to say we use that language, celebrate.
I'm not, I'm only celebrating the idea of the efficiency of the system. That's what I'm talking about here. I am not talking about the details of any given item. And legal is an important part of what we do. We want to be legal. We want to be appropriate, and we want to have a competent legal program here in the district. And I believe we do, and I'm in favor of approving this, and I am not speaking to the details of the situation. Thank you, Chair, for pointing that out. Yes. So I just say a positive program needs to be spoken to when it occurs. Very rarely do these things come up, you know, and when they do, I just like everybody to know, this doesn't go into the consent. This comes out on top, and it's the process. It's the program, not the details of any given case. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed have the ability to say nay. Passing unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donation to have a total value of one thousand dollars. One thousand dollars to Lake Weir High School from American Legion Auxiliary. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell.
Seconded.
Seconded by Board Member Thoreau. Any discussion? All in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed have the same sign. Passing unanimously. Vice Chair Campbell.
Oh, starting with me?
Can you thank him for the?
Oh, thank, oh, sorry. The thank you, absolutely. So thank you so much. We are always so grateful to anyone in our community, anyone and everyone who contributes in unique ways, and certainly will accept your cash, too. So we're so grateful for donations when they come in, and I'm certain that Lake Weir High School is definitely appreciative of this, and we just appreciate all in our community who continues to support our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. The following administrative briefing and work sessions are scheduled for April 21, 2022 at nine a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss alternative learning programs, quarterly data review, mental health assistance allocation plan one of two, achieve 2026 strategic plan update goal three, board topic, value adjustment, board appointment, and board topic, school board meetings, new time proposal. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for May 5, 2022, at nine a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss board topic FSBA board membership dues, mental health assistance allocation plan two of two, achieve 2026 strategic plan update goal number four, and impact of higher minimum wage 2022, 2023. Comments and concerns? Ms. Martinez-Lopez, any comments tonight?
Thank you.
Attorney Powers?
I just wanted to take a very brief moment to say that in, you know, part of what my job is in dealing with bearing departments is communicating with those departments to solve issues and problems that may arise. And over the past few weeks, I've dealt very closely with Ms. Dobbins, with Ms. Oliver, Mr. Whitehouse, Mr. Viennello, Mr. McGowan, and April Adams on truancy issues as well. And, or Ms. April Adams, sorry. And staff has been incredible in providing background information, data, research, support, things that I need to make my job easier. And I just wanted to say to all of you, it's very appreciated because, as you know, I have three employees, and the superintendent's office has the other six thousand nine hundred and some odd. So it's vital for what you do, and I greatly appreciate that input. So thank you. That's all. Nothing else from legal.
Thank you. Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. I appreciate that we just began our meeting tonight with students, but the conversation always comes back to students, so I thank you for that. And I did want to mention as a reminder, speaking of students, there is no school Friday. So I'm sure the students already know that, April 15. But it doesn't help to remind everyone else, there's no school, parents, there's no school on Friday. And on the note of students, we need to have a highly effective and dedicated team to support our students' success. And so I'm very pleased to say that we had an incredible turnout at our career fair this past Saturday. And I'm sure you might already have this in your comments, but I was there and so impressed, not just with our human resource and talent development team, but we had school and district leaders representing all of our schools and our departments out there. The entire district, really, was there on Saturday. And we had three hundred and seventeen attendees coming to the career fair. I met many people from out of state, some just flew in the night before. We hired one hundred nineteen new team members on Saturday. And of that number, sixty are instructional, fifty-nine are non-instructional. So I just want to, again, thank the entire team that not just put this on, but everybody who showed up to support this. There were people assisting between schools, hiring for each other, and interviewing. And so it's truly a collaborative effort, and it's a pleasure to support this district. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Let's do this a little different. Ms. Campbell, you got the first draw tonight.
Okay. I'll start with that. Kudos to the district for putting on a terrific career fair. I had some questions about it. Honestly, whenever I met with Mr. Green, I picked up the phone and called him and said, are we sure that having it? are we sure that having it there and this is the right thing? And and kudos to them because they had a wonderful event. They had wonderful promotion for it, great social media out there. They were taking pictures of people. I happened to be in a spot where they were putting up a sign and they said, will you take a picture with our sign? And so they they did a really great job and obviously we can see how successful it was. So now we have to figure out how often we're having these career fairs because if we have that many people coming and all the vacant positions that we've had, especially if people are flying in just specifically to come and and be a part of our career fair, all of the folks that were hired on the spot, kudos to our team. That's the way it's supposed to work in talent development and human resources. So thank you to those who participated in that. I wanted to touch a little bit on a couple of things we saw tonight. So first of all, the very first student that we had, they were honoring Autism Awareness Month, I guess. And near and dear to my heart, my very first experience with learning about autism was when I was a sophomore in high school. I was taking a speech class, actually. It's one of those symbiotic things that that's when I first realized that communication was going to be my focus for the rest of my life, especially the spoken word. But I was taking a speech class and I did research on autism, actually. This was a long time ago, long before people really knew what autism was much and delivered a speech on autism. And one of the reasons that I did that was because my nonverbal sister, who was diagnosed with intellectual disabilities and cerebral cerebral palsy, I believed was also diagnosed or should have been diagnosed with autism because I believe she had characteristics in that vein as well. And so when I say it's near and dear to my heart, I'm grateful that after my prodding and my parents' prodding, she does have that as part of her diagnosis and so she's able to receive services specific to that. So it's amazing to me. I know when my son was was born, the statistics were one in 70, I believe, and I believe we heard tonight it's one in 40, 44. So the statistics are are growing, actually, of those that have those tendencies and characteristics and exceptionalities, I should say, that that they definitely have exceptional abilities that we definitely need to recognize and celebrate and and understanding how we need to accept and appreciate and and honor and just really make a point to understand those that might be a little bit different than us. Definitely doesn't mean that they shouldn't, they don't have a lot of things that are also the same. So we need to definitely be looking into how we can be even more accepting of those students with exceptionalities. I also loved hearing the students singing this evening. Show choir, near and dear to my heart. That's also something that I did. Ms. Crowder has been talking for a year or so that I needed to get out and see those kids actually perform. You couldn't see it probably as well as we could, but they definitely have motions to that last song that they did and it was anything they could do to hold back those motions and that was so fun. I can't wait to get out and see their concert. I believe the teacher said it was on May 4th, so I'm hoping that's going to work. May the fourth be with us. I hope I remember that one. So getting out to see those students. And I also don't think that the microphone probably did them justice because their harmonies were terrific and they were spot on and I just love that. I'm passionate about the arts and as Ms. Thoreau and I were talking, I think we need to have a music break in every one of our board meetings. It just gives a whole new energy in the room. So that was a, that was great. I I want to also mention about the data that we had talked about and Dr. Brooks spoke tonight just a bit about asking for data and if it's just enough for us to ask for data and just continue to look at data and and that's all we do. Having conversation this week also with some folks with the community engagement pillar, strategic five, as we move forward in each work session, we're hearing from each of these pillars. And I can assure you, whenever we start hearing from community engagement, we'll start hearing what those metrics are, what the baseline data is on communication and parent involvement and how we're going to be able to move that needle. And that's part of what strategic goal, strategic plan goal number five is is all about. But I've also asked for the third week's data similarly to the way I had asked, excuse me, third nine weeks, similarly to the way I had asked for it before, asking for Ds and Fs of our students in the third nine weeks as well as the parent logins. But this time I also asked for even it to be aggregated a little bit more with attendance and discipline data rolled into that, too. So that obviously is taking a little bit longer, but I'm interested to see that and I know that the team is working on that, to to look at what that looks like for us and and what we can do. But perhaps part of what the social workers speak on, spoke on this evening, part of what they had spoken on this evening might be a part of that. I'm not sure. I have a lot of questions and I'm glad that Mr. Browning has asked for their contact information. I I have a lot of questions about what they're seeing, I guess, and and frankly, certainly the disparities potentially in how discipline may be handed down from the district level. But also wondering if the community has a greater conversation to be had as well. I don't know what that's going to look like and where that is going to land, but you all know I'm championing, we need more community involvement with our kids. We need more churches. We need more parents. We need more civic groups. We need more of everybody touching and impacting our kids. And and the more we can have that engagement with our students on a regular basis, whether that's mentorship or whatever that might look like, that's community engagement. And so we're we're going to be working on all of those tools. Nearly finally, I I wanted to also mention last night at the city city planning and zoning meeting, I know we just talked about in our most recent work session that we're going to be having an upcoming work session to be discussing the interlocal agreement and and intergovernmental arrangements. But we became a topic of conversation last evening in the city planning and zoning meeting quite a bit because, as we all are aware, the city and the county continue to approve projects that are going to have impact on our schools. And we need to start looking very, very seriously about what our future plans are. Whenever we have a new, and actually the city planning and zoning commission last night is sending this to council in May without a recommendation because it was a 3-3 vote and so it wasn't actually approved or denied, sending to council without a recommendation. But there's an 84-unit apartment complex that's going in two blocks essentially from Saddlewood Elementary School. And this is separate from the 300-plus unit apartment complex that is potentially going to go in directly across the street from Saddlewood. And if we know anything about our attendance in schools right now, Saddlewood is our next to largest school, elementary school, larger than a couple of our middle schools, and we are bursting at the seams and have nowhere for those students to go should they come to that school, similar to Liberty Middle School and Westport High School. Those are our most overcrowded schools. Localized overcrowding is significant. It's a real conversation we need to be having. I was glad to be there representing, you know, as my seat is in in that non-voting position, as I'm sure you all are in your non-voting positions on those zoning boards. But I just wanted to mention, we were brought up again in conversation because it comes back to this school district and this school board on making decisions on what we're going to do about localized overcrowding. So I'm looking forward to those conversations because we need to have them because they are real and the city and the county continue to approve projects that are going to impact us significantly. And the last thing, a lot of culminating senior activities are happening, proms, concerts, band competitions, spring sports, all of that wrapping up, graduations right around the corner. Certainly want to wish all of our seniors that they're going to do well and that their next chapter is coming soon. But before that, we have our final nine weeks wrapping up for all of our students and educators. And as Dr. Gullett said Friday, we do have off from school. So everyone that works in the district and everyone who attends school in the district, enjoy your long weekend and prepare to register for summer school, whatever that might look like for you. That is coming. Come back from the long weekend rested and refreshed and ready to finish strong. And wherever you potentially are celebrating this Easter weekend, he is risen indeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Campbell. Mr. Browning?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Wow. To Ms. Campbell's comments, boy, hip, hip, hooray. What you're saying is absolutely true and absolutely critical. We've got to dig into those things. We've got to change the old patterns because this is our time and we've got to do it. Dollars, opportunity, we don't have to necessarily do the roads. We don't have to necessarily do all the things the commission's doing, but we fit into them all. And when you are talking about like, like a capital outlay, everything balances, even things that you're not actually touching. So, boy, hip, hip, hooray, and thank you for bringing it up. And I'll go to my items. The last Saturday, we had beautiful opportunity here out of Baxley, Senator Baxley, Joe Harding again. Representative McLean had had people there. He wasn't there. Perry brought ahead messages. Such a powerful legislative support and also coming from the governor almost every day this week simply because we we've ended the session. It is all about schools and it's really coming out strong. Health, economics, dads in homes, all the things we talk about that really impact our educational effort. It's out there and and I just say hip, hip, hooray. You know, let's, let's go for it. If you've had a chance, if not, Google it, get into it. If you weren't at a specific thing, you can, you can still get, get to it. Secondly, health. I think it's time to focus as we end this year and we go into the next and just, just celebrate the the energy, the good spirit, the kindness, decency that went into coping with COVID and and all of the ramifications of that. And it really does matter. Everybody kind of put their shoulder, you know, I don't care if it was in your own home, in a school, in your workplace, all of that. And we all have to, I think, as a society, appreciate the great job we did. Things like this can come forward as we move along as a civilization, as a species and as planet. And wow, that was a big one, at least for my life. That ranked up there with polio and some, some other things, like twice the size of the Hong Kong flu back in the day. So, all right. Public input has been incredible. I am so pleased with this. You have no idea. You, the folks that have stepped up, the ladies that were talking about the, I'm just going to go right to it, the, the, the black issue. And here's, here's my input into this, where, where they say, wow, we got problems. Well, the board here and I have been championing for a lo- long time, this 20 years down at Stanton. And sometimes hearing about the problem is not that exciting. But I'll tell you, every problem has a solution. And I saw, I saw that idea of an action plan from the one speaker, from the other ladies, the idea, the statistics. Statistics, you know, they're, they're helpful. I rely on trends all the time. And wow, I was so impressed that somebody was that brave is to come out and talk about solutions. And that's really what we need to do. It's very positive. The solution is positive. You may have something negative associated with the problem and it may think like, whoa, we fell through the ice. But the true, truth of the matter is that then you had a rescue. And when you have that rescue, yeah, somebody fell through the ice, but doggone it, we, we, we had a rescue, we had a positive outcome, like with the, with our new, that, that new school system, drop up, you know, not dropout, drop up. How exciting, what an exciting situation and some of the comments that came forward. So I'm just very pleased at that positive, positive thinking. Now, I want to put forward an idea. This is not criticism, but our logo, I like logos being updated. I did it at juvenile justice. I've done it at other situations. Logos don't have to live forever. And I would, I I'm so taken with our art effort and our teaching and I would like to just put forward the idea that we might think about a logo effort, competition, what our chair speaks to of as a challenge, something, I don't know, stay with the old, go with the new. But but graphics and logo and branding change as time goes along. And I just want to bring that forward. And I don't know if this is, this is my final item. I don't know if it applies, but I felt like I, I, I took up banjo, I took up guitar and what have you, just to keep my cognitive faculties going. I felt like that was a jam session today. That was so exciting. That was so exciting. And how the intellectual switch of key, the keys, and when they came and the timing and I don't know if everybody knows, but that whole program can explode across the stage. That, those, those students all had actions and moves that went with that program. So you just saw the vocals on it. So I, I was just so pleased with it. I would like the, like the idea of perhaps some jam session type thing that's so creative and so helpful to students and the community. Pull this thing together and really light the candle. So thank you, Chair, and thank you, board.
Thank you, Mr. Browning. Ms. Thoreau?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I think we were all inspired by starting our board meeting tonight with such wonderful music and I was able to have the opportunity pre-COVID to, to see that, that chorus perform at Dul Webb Spruce Creek. And there was over 400 residents that were there for that performance and they are huge supporters. They even have their own name, they're Rattler something, I can't remember. But but they really support Bellevue High School, the group from Spruce Creek, and it is a great community connection. And I think they're going to be performing again soon. Is it May, May 4th, May 24th? I'm getting all the, every day in May, something's happening, okay? All day and all night. So I think that that's something that we're all going to have to just try to keep up with. I would kind of propose that there must be some way because we have, Westport has amazing, you know, fine arts program, music, and all of our schools do. And it would be neat, as we're waiting to start our meetings, to maybe have some of that music piped in, you know, musical interlude while we're waiting for the, for the board meeting to start. And it would be a way to showcase our students to say
Brilliant, brilliant.
Musical interlude was brought to you by, you know, Westport High School's rock band or, you know, whatever. So if there's a way to do that, that would be really cool. I think you could just feel the energy lift in this room and that's what music does. So hear, hear for that. The second thing, just piggybacking on Vice Chair Campbell, the, our next interlocal agreement working group meeting is on Thursday. And being part of these committees has been such a learning experience for me because it just reinforces the fact that the school board does not stand alone in isolation. We are one part of this community. And by working collaboratively with other governmental entities and municipalities, that's how we really get the voice of the, the people and what needs to happen for the people going. And for me to learn that it's really going to take a change in the comprehensive plan for Marion County, for us to really get traction in being able to remedy this localized overcrowding situation, which is so glaring, glaringly apparent to our community. And so of course, they're going to look to the school board and say, how come you're not building more schools for God's sake? You know, the car lines are out in the streets and, you know, you have all those portables there? If only it were that simple. But what's going to make it more simple? And I'm thinking of you, Board Member Browning, and that's what I always say, problems wouldn't be problems if they didn't have solutions. And the solutions come from building relationships. And I think that that's something that, among many things, that this board has really excelled at. And it is a time to acknowledge and say, say thank you to each and every board member that has been part of this COVID experience. Apparently Florida is number six out of 50 states in terms of being successful and, and helping to mitigate the pandemic and keeping schools open. I'll say again, because I'm really proud of this. I remember when we were talking about, well, everything's shutting down, so we're, are we going to meet remotely as a board? Well, we chose not to do that and, and I couldn't imagine doing that with what we had on our plate. Well, we chose not to do that. And, and I couldn't imagine doing that with what we had on our plate. I couldn't imagine not having the physical connection with the rest of my board members as we did our best to navigate our way through COVID-19. So I think that that's something to continue to be very proud of. We certainly have all paid a price, but in the end, we did what we felt was best for kids. And speaking of what's best for kids, it's also what's best for our employees. And I'll simply say, promises made, promises kept. We had no idea what we were dealing with a couple of years ago when it came to budget. But this year, we did. And it has been an honor and a pleasure to, to work as a board, to help our employees, really, we say it, but to come forward with a compensation package that acknowledges that in a very real way. Hopefully, we can continue to do that into the, into the future. You all mean that much. And of course, and the next question becomes, when am I going to see the raises in my paycheck? And I don't know about the rest of you, but I'm already getting those questions. Yes. So I will say the same as about every other thing that's supposed to be added to your checks. And that is, is when you get it, you can be guaranteed that it's not going to bounce. So that's the, the best news. The second thing is, is that it also gives me an opportunity to shed a light on our payroll and finance processes. Our, our computer systems are very antiquated. Too much of that work needs to still be done by hand. That's what's made it take so long, you know, to, to get the different compensations that we've offered through the school year. And we all want our money right now, but I think that that's going to have to be a conversation that we're going to have to have as a board. Because you support students by supporting the systems and processes that streamline the flow. And I know we always want to make sure that our kids have the technology they need, but, but our folks also need to have the technology that they need that is reliable. It doesn't have to be the, you know, the be all and the end all, but it needs to be reliable and it needs to be workhorse-like and crank it out and, and get it done. So, budget time's going to be coming up, and I think that this is something that we've brought up from time to time. But we definitely need to look at updating our, our computer systems so that we can make these great things that we're trying to do push out more timely. I'm looking forward to setting sail for summer school. I'm looking forward to getting around to the schools and seeing all the great things that are going to be happening. I love the fact that it's, again, not just for recovery, but also for acceleration. I know from my own family that being able to knock out that Algebra I during the summer really helps open up a schedule. Some of us have been around long enough to remember that there used to be a, an additional period to the school day that was, that was paid for and, and budgeted by the state. And so we had seven-period days. Well, since that was taken away, it has become super intense. You know, six periods a day, you know, four years, 24 credits. No room in the schedule for a lot of kids to do these great things with, with electives because they're stuck on that hamster wheel of, of intensive reading and intensive math. So, having the ability to provide a summer school program that meets the needs of, of really every learner that's willing to show up is such a benefit. So please set sail with us and focus on either recovering your credits that you need or accelerating your school career because it is ready and available to each and every student. And the last thing I have is that I just wanted to thank Coach Ed Hall at Vanguard High School for his passion for, for coaching. The Mesbys Coaches Appreciation Party was last Saturday night. I know Vice Chair Campbell, you were trying to get back from a tournament and, and the airlines got you.
Yes, they did.
Stinging nettle got me. You should have seen my face. That's what I get for doing yard work, right? I was swelled up like a toad. But I think Superintendent Gullett, you were able to go and,
Wonderful. It was a wonderful celebration.
Yes, yes. And it was the Soul Food Kitchen, I'm trying to remember the gentleman's name, incredible guy that sponsored all the food. And it was just a happenstance conversation like happens in Ocala barber shops. I think that's how Coach Hall met him. And it just went on from there. So I heard it was a beautiful event. I'm looking forward to participating next year. So, yes, there are so, so many great things happening. We're always going to have our challenges, but I'm ready to set sail, so let's go. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thor. Ms. King?
Yes, I'm ready to set sail too. Tonight, I am going to discuss or just talk a little bit about what Dr. Brooks brought to our attention tonight. And, and actually, you didn't bring it to our attention. I think we're all aware of what has been going on in our community for a while now. And it's just been one of those things that has just kind of been stirring in me the past couple months lately. Because what I see happening is very concerning for our community. But something I've been thinking about with these numbers and everything is I see it's our boys. When I'm looking in the paper or I see the news, it seems to be our boys. And it's very concerning. And when I look at our referrals or things that come before us, I'm seeing an increase in our discipline and our behaviors and our gangs and our fighting and our drugs and our violence that's taking place in Marion County, Florida. And it's, it's been here in smaller doses, but it's getting louder and louder. And so, when Dr. Brooks comes before us and she says, you know, it's one thing to look at the data and we know this stuff is happening, but it's another thing to make a task force and quit ignoring and hoping that what is taking place in our community goes away because right now, it's not going away. I haven't, actually, the past couple weeks, I think I've mentioned some things to maybe Mr. McFadden and even Mr. Livingston because it's, it's highly concerned. And, and I'm like, not exactly sure what we could do or how to do it. And I even saw something last week, and it was a very positive program where it's a program for the boys and it works on mentoring and tutoring and their life skills, exposure to positive experience, emotional support, and their peer-to-peer relationships. And when I saw that program, it, it just stuck to me. And in my mind, I'm going over my head and I'm reaching out and I'm like, what is something we could do? What, who could we, help us with that? And in my opinion, the best people that could help us with that are our strong male leaders in our community. You know, and I, I want to be part of that, but I also recognize that I am a woman and, and I would love to encourage and somehow, if we can come together and work on this task force, because we have boys that we have got to save. Because what I'm seeing in the paper, sometimes it's there, sometimes it's not, is highly concerning. And I'm not sure if we're intentionally hoping it goes away, if we don't know what to do. But I know that we have really good leaders. I know we have people that care about our community. And so whatever I can do as a board member to help support, facilitate, come together, I am more than willing. I don't, I don't have the answers, but boy, I sure want to help find what those answers are and those solutions to help our, our own, our own Marion County boys and our students be better and be safe and be well. And that starts here. And it's no longer in other states, far away, other cities. It's, it's here. And so, Dr. Brooks, thank you for coming before us tonight. It meant a lot to me as a board member. I, like I said, I've been thinking, kind of reaching out, trying to search, but how we move forward, I'm not sure exactly what it would look like. But I'm more than willing. And that's all I have to say about that this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. I do want to start with positives. We do want to recognize our, for the month of April, our Human Resources and Business Services and Support Services Appreciation Month, our HR and our Business Services and Support Services. Ms. Thor just kind of mentioned some of the people that are doing a tremendous job of trying to handle the business of the district. We, we oftentimes talk about the, the educational piece, but there is a business in the district of checks and balances and a lot of different things that go on and contracts and all those types of things. So we, we, we truly appreciate what they do all the time. And it's not, it's not out there in the forefront of the things that they do. But our staff know how great they are when they, when our checks are, are deposited on time and, and our benefits and stuff are done in the right way. So I really appreciate our Human Resources Department, our Business Services and Support Services. You guys, you guys do it year-round and you make it flow. So we, we, we congratulate you on those things. I also want to thank our OPD officers tonight that are here, Officer Berry and Weisinger. Thank you guys always. We appreciate you being here. And we appreciate all of our law enforcement for what they do. We, we heard tonight a lot of different things. And I want to thank our social wor- let me say this. I want to, I want to to thank our social workers for going beyond what you do on a normal basis of not just going to do your job, but looking at some root causes or looking at some things beyond what's required as a social worker or what the district may have required you to do as a social worker. And, and I want to commend you for being brave enough to step up and say that there are issues. A lot of times, people know that there are issues, but they're afraid to step out and call it what it is. And when things are wrong, they're wrong. And you can't, you can't correct anything until you address the issue and state that something is broken. And you guys, I, I want to applaud you again for having the courage and just being strong enough to step out on faith and say that we have an issue. And I, I do want to say that I'm, I'm sure this board, our superintendent, the administration understands that this is not a new issue. We know that there's an issue. And thank, thank you, Dr. Barbara Brooks, for supporting that call that the social workers gave out on tonight about this issue. Because as Ms. King just said, this is concerning, extremely concerning. And it goes, it goes beyond just the data that we heard because I know the problem is much bigger than the data. This is deep. This is deep. This is deep. This is personal to me, very personal to me. Especially when you start talking about our young men, as the father of four boys, the grandfather of two, one new one, I just got a grandson two weeks ago, a new grandson. It's very concerning that when he gets to school, he'll still be dealing with the same issues that we're having right now. Are we still going to be seeing this disparity in the discipline issues and all those types of things? This is pressing. Dr. Brooks, you, you stated about a task force. And what I've, what I've assessed of this situation, there are so many different people in, in, in the community doing so many different things, and I've yet to see those things come together as far as this hand is over here doing something different, this hand is over here doing something different. And nobody has said, let's bring this thing together. Yes, we still may need six different hands doing different things to reach that many different people. However, there has to be a bigger conversation and there has to be a bigger move, not just talk anymore. There has to be a legitimate move towards solving this problem. Solving this problem in the school, solving this problem, because I really believe solving this problem at the home and solving this problem in the streets. They're all connected. We may want to think that they're, they're not connected, but if there's an issue at the home, it comes to the school and it goes from the school to the street. So, we who have the power to do certain things and to pull these pieces together have to pull them together and have to start calling, calling these situations what they are and addressing those issues. So, social workers, you're right. I agree. There's a disparity in the discipline process. I agree that there are some things that are seriously broken. And if we do not address them things, those things ASAP. I've just had a conversation with our superintendent this afternoon about these very same things. And I'm sure I know that she and her team, and, and I'll throw this out there to all of the executive board members, we need collaborative thinking about this. We, it's time for us to quit being scared to say something is wrong and to quit being scared of stepping out and trying to deal with the issues. Too many kids, we're seeing it every day. Too many of our kids are getting caught up in that disciplinary, disciplinary system in the school. And as I've said it before, it starts, once it starts in school, it just transends. We, it transcends and moves somewhere else. And it moves from the schools to the streets. And I'm tired of turning on the news and seeing kids killing kids. I'm tired of turning on the news and seeing these kids that look like me and saying, why is a 14-year-old with a gun? What does this has to do? Why is this kid in school? Why does this kid, then I go back and look at other things and I say, okay, this kid got caught up in the disciplinary process in our system, in our system, and we missed signs or we pushed them out or we did something that, that we, we did not take the time to look at the problem and try to address root causes. We, we, we won't be the save all, but we got to start trying to save some. We have to. And if we don't start now, those numbers are going to go up. Those numbers that the social workers talked about, they're going to go up, they're going to go up. It amazes me when you have a small percentage of a group of people in a school, yet, yet the disciplinary record for them is beyond, it, it just doesn't match. It just doesn't match. And I said this a few weeks ago, we talked about that school-to-prison, school-to-prison pipeline. When you look at the numbers that our, our social workers gave us, it's the same demographic if you compare it. If you place them, took those numbers and placed them on top of the prison system, they're the same numbers. There's the same numbers with the amount of the population and the percentage that's overrepresented. It's the same numbers. And we are contributing to that as a school district when we don't deal with our disciplinary issues and look at alternative methods of discipline, of referrals. And, and what happened, this is what I, I keep hearing, people calling me all the time and saying, I don't, I don't have that communication. These are parents that are concerned parents. What happened to, to, to teacher conferences? We don't have teacher conferences anymore. It seems to me that they've gone away. And I understand what happened. Let me tell you what happened. We got so caught up on trying to have a school grade. We got caught up on trying to have VAM scores. We got so caught up on teaching a test that we have lost that interaction with parents and teachers. We've lost that interaction where teachers are able to call the parent and say, hey, Johnny been showing his butt. I need you to be on the same team with me. And, and we're on the same team. That's what happens. That's, that's when you curtail discipline problems. When the parent and the teachers talk, it shouldn't, some things should, I, I got in trouble, listen, I got in trouble. I'm being transparent. I got in trouble in the fifth grade. And you know what? The teacher did not give me a referral. You know what she did? She and the principal showed up at my house that afternoon. And they had a conversation with my parents. I promise you, I never got in trouble again. I promise you. So what happened? When did our, when did our community get so, so where we can't have a, they, I, I never got a referral. It's not on my record. Never got a referral for that. But I, I promise you, I remember that to the day I die because I remember the conversation. So there has to be some more communication. There has to be something. And, and, and that's the job of a social worker. The teacher has a conversation. Johnny showed out the day in school. I need you to talk to the parent. The teacher talked to the parent. Social worker talked to, the principal talked to the parent. And the parents, we, we're not adversarial. We're, 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 we want the same thing. We all want Johnny to succeed. And when that happens, guess what? Johnny will succeed. I'm here today because I had a principal, and I'm going to say his name because now he's my frat brother, Ed Fordham. Ninety-something-plus years old now. He's retired principal from Dr. N H Jones, N H Jones. I'm going to be correct because it wasn't Dr. then, it was N H Jones. because it wasn't Dr. then, it was N H Jones, from N H Jones, retired principal from Dunlop High School, who came to my house in the fifth grade with my fifth-grade teacher, Ms. Nimmar, and told my parents what I did. And to this day, I, I, it straightened me out. It straightened me out. So we have to think, writing a referral isn't always the solution. Because they did something in the code of conduct that we say is bad and whatever, is not always the solution. Sometimes we need to just get back to having some plain common sense conversation. And, 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 and that's that parent interaction that you were asking for. I get it. I completely understand it. And I, I, I just wish we can get back to doing something. I know our superintendent is working on some things, her team. I'm encouraging our social workers, don't stop being vocal. Don't stop sharing with your supervisor. Don't stop sharing with the superintendent. Don't stop sharing with these board members. Don't stop sharing with anybody. Keep hollering to somebody, listen. Keep hollering to somebody, listen. And when, when enough, when the right person hears it, things will start changing. Things will start changing. There has to be a change. Tomorrow, and, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm gonna end because I'm frustrated about this whole thing. Tomorrow, we're getting ready to go to a, some of us will be attending a tour of the prison. And I know folks said, "Why do you want to go to the prison?" Because if we don't invest in our kids now, we're gonna invest in them then. We will invest in them somewhere. I'd rather put the money in at an early age. I'd rather invest in early learning. I'd rather invest in pre-K. I'd rather invest in those things rather than them having to get caught up in the system. So hopefully, we'll learn some things that we did not know, and we'll understand why it's important, why it's so vitally important that, that we addressed some of these, these issues that are, that came forth to us tonight. If it sounds like I'm on a soapbox, I don't care, because I am. This is pressing, because it goes beyond these schools. It's in the news. Ms. King, you stated it so well. You, you were, you were holding back, but I can say it. It was in the news. It's in the newspaper. And I'm just tired. I'm sick and tired. I'm sick and tired. And you're right, you challenged us. You said, "There has to be some men." You just ain't say that, you just didn't put the right address. There has to be some black men in the community that's willing to step up and say, "We need to deal with this." But there has to be some folk in the system that's willing to also address these issues as well. So I'm, again, I'm, I'm gonna ask that our schools administrators, our school leadership be bold in the actions that they take going forward. I'm, I'm, I'm asking our teachers to, to understand there has to be some cultural sensitivity in how we deal with people. There has to be a mindset change, a mind change, mindset change. So when we do that, I'm, I'm sure things will get better. I, I truly believe that. This is the season for this to happen. This is the season for this to happen. Again, I, 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 I do want to congratulate those young kids that came out tonight, that sung. That's our future. That's our future. And we should not write off any kid because they get a disciplinary issue or have a disciplinary action. Part of discipline, and I'm gonna say this, I'm through. Part of the discipline is showing what you've done wrong, correcting the behavior, and giving them the opportunity to be successful. It's not just punitive. It's not just punitive. And if we start doing it just punitive, we're, we're missing the boat. We're missing the mark. And we'll have to have more kids that's dropped out and get caught up and get frustrated and won't ever be in the system. They won't, they won't ever graduate, and that won't go forward. So I'm gonna stop there, so I don't say the wrong thing tonight. Okay. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placements list for students through March 8th, 2022. Ms. Martinez Lopez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
No, sir.
Here we go. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of students JD 22097, JD 22100, JD 22101E, and JD 221012 with educational services for the remainder of the 2021-2022 school year and the first semester of the 2022-2023 school year?
And I would ask to amend that. It's, the last number is JD 22-1012. And I believe that you indicated it was 221012.
I'm sorry.
Just to clarify, it's JD 22-102.
JD 22-102. With educational services for the remainder of the 2021-2022 school year and the first semester of the 2022-2023 school year. May I have a motion, please?
So good.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell.
Seconded.
Seconded by Board Member Thor. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Opposed by the sign of the day. Passing the unanimous. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell, seconded by...
Everybody.
Ms. King.
I heard them all.
By Ms. King. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye? Aye, passing the unanimous. Meeting adjourned at 8:06 PM.